And hopefully we can find those kind of solutions. But hopefully those folks, Richard, maybe can help us out as well, figure out what the solution is for the problem.
Okay.
Thanks. I think we've, uh, we're gonna move on now. So thanks for the discussion. Thank you, you guys all for coming down. We actually had a long way home, you know? Cause there's...
Well, when we hear Aaron coming down from Big Valley and doing it in twenty minutes, uh... I'm worried about you. That C-Tech, CHP guy's worried about you too. I'm worried too.
All right, let's take a look at our eleven fifteen, I know three six, Lasting Family Services.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. Thank you for calling today. My name is Michelle Latimer. I am the Deputy Program Director for Lasting Family Services.
You're welcome.
Sharon's making me.
I just wanted to thank you for consideration of our proclamation that October is domestic violence awareness. I think everyone's been hearing the news a lot about domestic violence. It's a prominent issue in our community and our nation. And so I just wanted to be here to answer any questions you might have about local domestic violence statistics and to thank you for your support of Lasting Family Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've had an opportunity to work with this organization for many years and have a profound amount of respect with the youth for our community and I believe that you've adopted this recommendation.
I would second and ask you for this, for this, yeah.
Yeah. I think Coach Harbaugh needs to get a copy. Thank you. And as you say, I think the, uh, it's very much, people are becoming very much aware of it.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Sorry to get into the way. Appreciate your efforts and bringing this to us today. Thank you. Uh, no. So, uh, do you have a comment on it? All right, so it's been moved and set. I'll always say hi. All right. Thanks. All righty. Okay, let's take that for our fair reports.
Hey, Jim.
Good afternoon. Well, in your packet it shows kind of the breakdown of our fair and sort of highlights and some other things that we obviously have some issues with. Our exhibits are kind of staying the same last couple of years. We've worked a lot on going to the schools and getting more participation from the schools. And also Becky from Bieber, Becky Albott has done a little bit of job bringing some of the stuff in from the Bieber area. Let's kind of continue on. We've had a couple of meetings already on exhibits and concessions and stuff. This year on our gate attendance, same as what we had last year. Last year it was the heat. This year it was two days of rain.
Thunderstorms.
Thunderstorms around us, but not on the grounds except for Saturday a little bit. And we will be turning that into our insurance company to help them get some money back on that. We did it last year for that heat. It affected our concessions, affected Carnival, it affected admissions also. So that was a chunk of change we got was a little over fourteen thousand dollars from the insurance company. So this year, the only thing that really looked like it affected was admissions. And possibly, probably Saturday night was one of that. We sold more tickets than actually the people were there. So I know that that affected a little bit. But with that new venue that we did, it has to be a three-year venue before they'll give you some insurance money off. But if we can get some of our admission back, that'll, that'll help a lot.
What do you mean a three-year venue?
I'm sorry.
You said a three-year venue? What do you mean by that?
Uh, it has to be in place for three years. So they get kind of an idea of what you're, what they're gonna do. Saturday night was the first one where they actually put those tribute bands on, on Saturday night. Now, we've had, as ground entertainment people were, but not to this quarter. So that's just what the insurance is part of that policy that we pull out every year. It costs us a thousand dollars to do that policy, but it's well worth it. Again, you can see on attendance, the Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Thursday, don't know what happened there, just, I don't know. It was a good, good day. We had a little bit of cloud, but Friday and Saturday we had rain. So those Thursday and Fridays were ones that really, really killed us there. And the Carnival had an excellent Saturday and Sunday, which made up a big difference to that, um, the amount that we're guaranteed. So that helped out. The season passes, last year we gave them for fifteen dollars. This year we bumped it up to twenty dollars. You'll see more, you know, increase in revenue, but we didn't sell them all and we had, so... But it's still, it's a good deal. You're basically getting one value, one person in for free. So it's still a good offer. And the charts there, you can see the missions last three years. Season passes kind of especially, a little bit now, so. Grandstand revenues, obviously, since, oh, about two thousand and twelve, when we last, last two years, we've had not the kind of entertainment, country entertainment we need. Now, I am working on that again early. I've already got a couple of contacts out, but again, they're still waiting to see where they're gonna go, where they're gonna go, nickel, west, east coast, west coast. It's, it's a tough game right now with all the festivals that are going on around the United States and they keep on popping up. And what's happening is guys like Blake Shelton are taking these young bands coming up that can see the quality in them and are pushing them forward. That's how Luke Bryan got real popular. And Jared Ammon, all those guys are just doing well. They get that bump from those big guys and they go out another way a week. And let's say Minnesota, which is the newer one out. I mean, they have to listen to Minnesota. Anyways, the same place. And they'll play to two hundred thousand people and they just, they don't have to go through these circuits as much. What helped us before their circuits is that Wilson Events would go ahead and do six different fairs over different areas and stops. And we may pay thirty thousand, another guy may pay fifty thousand because they have the ability to pay that much and have the bigger crowd they can do. So, but talking to Wilson Events last year and the year before, they're just having a hard time surrounding people anymore. So it's not just...
Is that who we deal with, is Wilson?
I've dealt with Wilson Events up until two years ago. He came up with some people that I didn't think was gonna help for the board and we denied him. The last one he did was actually Jody McSeen. And now we're working with TDI, which is the guy that does our ground acts. He's getting into doing this also. But again, it, I'm working with both of them because I've told Ethan with Wilson Events that, you know, you come up with something that's, you know, we're not tied to anyone personally. We don't have a contract with anybody. You know, we go out and try to find anybody that does that for a living to go out and try to find those people for. So...
Who did we have in two thousand or twelve?
Jody McSeen.
Oh, she's dead.
Right. But she cost us thirty-five, so.
Who was last year?
Last year was James Otto. He's, um, the last two have been, well, let's see. James Otto was a writer that had a lot of good, good. He sold his music, basically what he does. And I write...
Who is this year again?
Uh, oh my gosh. I'm sorry. Little Texas.
When did you get Jason Wheeler?
Well, I'll tell you.
He and Chris was going, I mean, Chris did, he was singing with that disaster summit thing, you know? I'll tell you what, I mean, like you said, it's so hard, our, our, I mean, one year, we should actually try really pump up the good local talent.
Um, we've talked about that at our last, you know, actually, bring in some other bands that'll bring some from the area. But we just talked about that on last Wednesday at the door when we had our entertainment. Pretty much everything, the grandstands was kind of done, down. Showdown, I don't know what happened there. I really don't. We look at about fifty percent decrease there. The headliner was down and done. What I did this year was I tried to get Saturday night, bring in a different group in and I changed the racing and the derby to the same date, which was on Sunday. We lost a little bit of admission that way. But I figured we could probably compensate some of that with Eagles and Beagles and it just didn't work out right. So we're gonna be looking at it, well, we started looking at it already on what we want to do next year as far as those nights and see what we want to tweak a little bit. Food concessions, for the mount, we were down and attendance were up. I went back and looked at prices that the vendor, the vendors were charging and they were exactly the same they did last year. We didn't have hardly any increases because I told them not to. I tried to, you know, they put in there three dollars for a bottle of water and we tell them they can't go above two dollars. So we do have some restrictions we can't put on if we want to. I tried to get one vendor pretty much everything, you know, like Paradise Ice, as you know, that does the ice drinks and stuff. That way they can make money and they come back every year and we don't have to worry about that. So, yeah, our concessions did very well this year. People were hungry. There's a daily breakdown there. Now, that's, that's not our take, that's what they brought in. That's not our percentage. We get twenty percent. So we were over...
Was that the gross or the net?
That's our gross.
Twenty-two percent of their gross?
What's that?
You get twenty-two percent of the vendor's gross?
No, they're, uh, they're net. We take out their space that they pay for at that time and the taxes and then we take it out there. This has got, uh, yeah, this is their gross.
Yeah, that's interesting when you look at those numbers for the food side because on the beer side, knowing with the beer concession this year, probably just shy of fifty percent of the revenue from the beer concession all through on Friday. I mean, it was, they, the beer sales were like Wednesday and Thursday. I was, you know, I was listening to, you know, what the previous people said were the volume, you know, how much they would get until the end of the year. Now, this is like terrible because then Friday, Friday night single handling would just probably equal what the other four days combined did.
Uh, two thousand and eleven, we did, that was one of the last big years we did, we did over fourteen thousand.
Yeah. I mean, the mount, the mountain, they actually, I'm looking at this, this graph right here that shows your, your food sales and, you know, it's pretty well distributed across. I guess they seem to be drinking for Fridays because if you look at these numbers on the beer thing, it would be, you know, you've got these little, and then just like cheap whiskey. You take the other four days out and together and it would be just a little bit more than what they did just in the same day on Friday.
Well, that's one of the problems is that, you know, we need to have...
So even though the thunderstorm came in and the show, well, that gained impact and everything, I guess they all decided to go down stairs and drink. Whatever it was, it, it was a killer night.
And again, you know, we appreciate the continual support that this board and the previous boards have given us and our sponsors especially. You know, this, this helps a lot to offset a lot of the bills. And Tom, you asked me something the other day when I was there about revenue versus expenses. And we ended up with, now this is not accounting labor, any kind of labor, this is just expenses of a fair other than labor. And we ended up with eighty thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars as a positive. So our expenditures were, revenues were two hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and then our expenses were one forty-three, three ninety-six. Looking back last year, I didn't get the revenue numbers, but I did, I mean, I didn't bring them with me, but it was about a hundred and two, hundred and two something. I just didn't bring that one with me. So we do make some money off of it, but, you know, when you do fair, labor goes from the time you start your season all the way through September or so, October. So it's kind of, I mean, I could probably figure out that one week, I just didn't put it in there, so.
You know, I have a whole question. On the, yeah, it was interesting, the, you know, when you look at the whole thing, it looks like, even though with the attendance being down like ten percent, when you look at the food, it's basically the same, carnival is basically the same. So, I mean, people...
Well, carnival's got guaranteed. They're contracted guaranteed. We get X amount of dollars and then we get a percentage of what goes over about that.
So the food was basically the same, but then you look at other things. I mean, what it seems like is that people just, the, the, the way the shows are being packaged, it appears that their people aren't interested, that they need to be re-branded or whatever. Because, I mean, if the food was also down by forty percent, you could say, okay, well, people just didn't have money to spend. But it's less people gone, still spending the same amount of food, but forty percent off on some of the other activities. So, I mean, if I was looking at it, trying to figure out how to get things up, I mean, if you do the same thing again next year, you're gonna have the same results with the way the market, the shows, I mean, the, that's my take.
What do you mean by marketing? What do you mean?
Well, I mean, when you have ten percent last, when you look at your food sales...
Well, I understand the significance, but what would you do different?
Well, I don't know, that's your...
I mean, you're talking about packaging.
Yeah, advertising it. Forty percent down, your product down. The, uh, the other thing, you know, in the summary, you said the overall fair revenue was up by only point eight percent. So the gate, the gate was down by eight, two hundred dollars, eighty-two to forty-two. But then you have the season passes that are still, that was up seven eighty-two. Then the grandstand was lower by ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. Concessions, overall concessions was up by thirteen eighty, but that gives us some total that's a negative number of sixteen, two thirty-six. So what else contributes to the fair revenue being up? What other, there's obviously other line items that, because it says here in the summary, the fair revenue was up by only point zero eight, but the gate was down for season. When you figure the gate, the season pass, the grandstand, the concession, it's showing it was sixteen thousand dollars less than last year. So what, what others do you have that I'm missing?
Well, we've got the, everything you've got up here, I added up on our, on our deal there. The way, the way this is put together is gonna be looked at again because these are right off of my books. The numbers I gave you as far as what we, we did, as far as the product loss, you know, those are, those are off of. Whatever, what else is on there is we've got the... Oh, this is the, I don't, I, I can't tell you. I have to go back and look through it again. I have, uh...
Jim, could I give you a suggestion? You could just summarize it, give us a P and L. No, it is, it is...
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Well, this is some...
I understand, I understand this is your P and L. I get this.
Kind of last, not really. The, the hard numbers I gave is basically the, the P and L because that's exactly what we spent all of the time. So the way some...
Yeah, what you gave us, it shows there was a negative, but, but then, you know, you say on here, well, you got sponsors, but for instance, okay, I'll give you a friend. So with those line items there being the gate, the season pass, the grandstand, concession, sixteen thousand dollars less than last year. But then there's, this year we brought in thirty-two thousand, two hundred dollars in sponsors. So for instance, if last year you brought in, you know, only sixteen thousand in sponsors, that would be the answer to my question. But it doesn't show what we brought in last year. I was just curious how you say that the revenue was up when these are going to show down.
Well, I, I could break it down better for you.
Okay. Can, can we get, maybe we could take this up then after our one thirty thing? You know, I just think, you know, this is a public document and, and the representations that are made in here, I mean, it's great to show revenue was up, but according to this it wasn't, that's all I'm saying. And I think, you know, if we're gonna present this as fact, we need to be able to answer those questions.
I think I understand your question.
You know, one thing we might, I don't know, just kind of sitting here looking at these numbers in, in terms of participation and stuff, and I realize that, you know, without how many years of history, this is the way we always do. And I'm sure at the Western Fairs Convention that you guys probably all sit around and talk about, you know, how, how you can maybe make it work better. But the one thing that strikes me really interesting is that our model, how we approach in terms of, and this kind of goes to the question you just asked, Mr. Chairman, in terms of how you rebrand it and everything, is look at the, you know, the private sector when it comes to the amusement parks. And I'm not saying that we turn ourselves into Disneyland and charge, you know, six hundred dollars to go to spend a week or something, you know, and they have the passes and the charges there. But what they do that's different from us is you pay one upfront cost to get in the gate and then all the stuff that takes place within the gate is basically free. You know, they figure out what their overall costs are and then you basically, you know, come up with promoting it. So whatever that, you know, that includes parking and everything is that, you know, if it costs us per, if you have, you know what the statistics and numbers are in your attendance and, you know, what, what does Wednesday cost us? We've got thirty-six hundred and forty-two people that, you know, came in through the gate on Wednesday. And if Wednesday costs us, you know, twenty thousand dollars, or let's say twenty-one thousand or twenty-two thousand dollars, just use it as a number for visibility and you divide the gate into that and it costs you like seven dollars for the whole day to break even. So what you want to try to do is collect seven dollars at the gate, you can say ten dollars, but that ten dollar fee that you're paying for them to promote it, you know, whether they want to go to the grandstand show or not, or they want to go, you have all those little venues up and down the fairway. I know that little venue in front of the grandstand there where the kids show has like the tent and they put on some kind of show. I, I had a chance to actually run it, went back a second time and watching the guy with the birds, you know, and the bird comes out of, off the building and swoops up, takes some food out. You even had people holding up money and it was coming, taking money out of the people's hands. I mean, that was kind of a scene and I noticed that with those shows or events take place, I mean, the crowd just kind of like moves in and around it. And, but I mean, it costs money to have like those kind of events on the ground. So, you know, maybe look at packaging your financing that way so that, and what it might do is it might cause that people know that when they pay for that fee to come in, it includes all these activities and you're paying for it, that, you know, they may boost some attendance in some of the other events. I mean, so instead of having, you know, every time you turn around, you're being nickled and dying for another fee to be paid out. By the time you're done, I mean, you know when you go to the fair, it's gonna cost you X number of dollars. And when you have a family with kids and stuff, you know, it becomes kind of a pricey type of thing. And that way you kind of cap the costs, you know, on a per person type basis.
For like Saturday, maybe the ticket's five dollars more, but it includes the show.
But you're, yeah, it's including, it's including the extra costs that would be involved there. So if you go on Saturday, you had forty-six hundred and nine people and let's say your cost for that day is fifty thousand dollars. So you figure out, you know, take the forty-six hundred, use your historic numbers and come up with a conservative estimate and maybe even build in a couple of extra dollars so at the end of the day, you know, and, but that's how the private sector does. I mean, you go down to like Magic Mountain, all these different amusement or theme type parks, you know, they don't, you don't just pay a fee to get in the gate and then you have all these extra fees that you pay for depending upon what you're gonna do. I mean, obviously you gotta pay for food and maybe drinks is separate, but, you know, maybe, you know, when you do that, you might have as part of the fee, work it out where you get your, you know, your ticket or something, maybe you punch on it so it entitles you to your corn, its corn dog, so it's already prepaid. Or if you walk up and you want a second or third one, then you have to pay the five bucks or something. But, but I think that's, you know, you talk about rebranding, you know, maybe that's an idea. I mean, that's obviously a contrary to the way the method that we've had in the past, but it's not even be feasible. But something, and also not feasible when, you know, people spend the same money, like they'll, maybe the showdown's fifty percent less, the headliner twenty-five percent less, the derby. So what happens is even people that went this time, they see the place like, you know, sixty-five percent empty. They're not gonna be really inclined to go next year. Those same people that would've, that went last year, this year...
But the people who are under...
So they're gonna be say, oh, this, this...
Don't go to that fair because they know everybody shows up.
So, so even if, by doing something like you're saying with the tickets, even if the revenue...
I think outside box brings it up.
But, you know, people want to go when it's full. So, so, yeah, so Friday you had at one point thirty-eight hundred people on the grounds and, and, you know, and the grandstand's got two hundred people sitting in. The guy's trying to perform and he's probably thinking, but if you've got thirty-hundred, eight-hundred people on the grounds, you should have like a thousand who should be sitting in that grandstand. Anyway, I guess that's...
Well, it depends on how much you want to be.
But, uh, well, you don't give anything away because what you figure out what your total cost is, you make sure your ticket coming in the door. So, you know, they walk in the door, it's, uh, it's not like they're, I mean, you may seem like they're getting it for free, but they're not. They're paying, you know, the overall cost by having everybody, you know, share in what that cost is instead of having, you know, a hundred people paying thirty-five dollars a ticket, you know, or, you know, two hundred people paying thirty-five dollars a ticket, you know, if everybody's part of their ticket price, an extra five or whatever dollars is going towards that, and you've got a thousand people giving you that extra five dollars, you've now exceeded the amount of revenue you would get from selling, you know, a couple hundred thirty-five dollar tickets. I mean, I think that's what, you know, the concept there is you spread that cost out. But in the same time, the folks know that that's there, they're gonna get to go see that show and it's not costing them anything extra. You might see more attendance, you know, some of the...
I've got a question for you, Jim. So when you and your wife go to the fair and you buy your ticket, is, is your ticket costing to cover the cost of why kids go ride the car?
The carnival, the carnival passes are...
That would be separate.
Are would be separate.
So the food and carnival would be separate.
Yeah, food and carnival, yeah.
Yeah, that's all separate.
That, those are, because you have vendors set up to do that, but when it comes to all the, the special show, whether it's the bird guy or that little magic act over here or the grandstand show, whatever, those overall costs are, because those are, those are the things that you're bringing on and using as an attraction to get people to come down here. Once you get the people down there, the, the food people know, okay, good, I can sell a corn dog or, you know, they can get their, you know, slurpee over at this, you know, event or whatever, maybe the snow cones. I mean, you see, everybody has their choices and that's, your food sales are good, they're strong, whether the weather's good or bad. I mean, the fact that it's Friday night, half the people were pretty much geared off the grounds because of the thunderstorm. I mean, ask Eric Hewing what the thunderstorm was like because his house just on the edge of town got struck by lightning and, I mean, it was like scary. In fact, they were shutting down the big hall right because, you know, because of that. But that, but I tell you, they still ate. Anyway, it's just, it's an idea. I mean, I, it's, I'd probably be out of my league there, but, but I tell you, the private sector, when you go to those parks and stuff, they get, they're, they get the money in their pocket when you walk in the door. And that's, your food sales are good, they're, they're strong, whether, whether it's good or bad. I mean, the fact that Friday night, half the people were pretty much geared off the grounds because of the thunderstorm, and ask Eric Hewing what the thunderstorm was like, because his house just on the edge of town got struck by lightning. And, I mean, it was like scary, in fact, it was shutting down the big hall right because, you know, because of that, but that, but I tell you, they're still eating. Anyway, it's just, it's an idea, I mean, I, it's, I, I'd probably be out of my league there, but, but I tell you, the private sector, when you go to those parks and stuff, they get, they're, they get the money in their pocket when you walk in the door and then you can have all the fun you want.
I heard that.
Yeah.